So next, we will go to presentations. Let me just say this first presentation is something that is really heartfelt. You know, we started this year off with the theme of diversity, equity, inclusion, and access. And certainly, I think that when I think about what has taken place over so many years, it's so important that we can capture this at this time. And at the same time that we've opened the Office of Racial Justice and Social Equity and Social Justice, the timing is just fitting for the decision that's been made by Congress and the Navy. Let me just say, the leadership of George Miller, who started this quest with Congresswoman Lee way back before I became a member of this Board of Supervisors. Just think, 80 years later, the exoneration of individuals that really were not able to see this come to fruition is something that is very special and near and dear to me as I had an opportunity to speak to so many of individuals that were around at the time that this took place. And even at one point, a family member never had an opportunity to speak to any of the individuals that were impacted by this, but certainly the impacted lives of family members and friends, neighbors, and particularly here in Contra Costa County, where we felt this major impact. So it really is a celebration today, and so I'm going to turn to individuals that put this together. But I do want to really highlight that this, we would not be here today if it had not been for the leadership of Mark DeSohnier, as he took the baton from George Miller to bring this across the finish line in the congressional delegation that made this possible. So Kendra Carr with the Office of Racial Equity and Social Justice.
Yes.
It's all yours.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you Chair Glover. Good morning, Board of Supervisors and members of the community. I'm Kendra Carr, and I serve as one of the co-directors of the Office of Racial Equity and Social Justice. And my colleague Peter Kim is away this week, but he offers his heartfelt gratitude for the powerful advocates we're recognizing today in this moment that we're celebrating. So today, as a county, we celebrate finally the exoneration of the Port Chicago sailors, African-American men wrongfully convicted of mutiny for refusing to return to work in unsafe conditions after a massive explosion killed 320 sailors, 200, over 200 of whom were African-American. Today, as a county, we also elevate the work of local advocacy leaders and the institutions who've preserved the stories and legacy of the Port Chicago sailors, and they have fueled our collective historical memory and pushed this country to correct a wrong committed against Black community members. They remind us why we must tell the stories, learn about the history, about our history and how it shapes our present. They remind us why we must listen to the people most impacted by injustice in this county and in this country, so we center them in conversation about how we advance a vision of a just, multiracial democracy. This is the commitment of the Office of Racial Equity and Social Justice and why community members advocated for a department that focused on racial healing in the county and working for county practices and policies that center the wellness of the most vulnerable. So today, we are going to honor and thank these courageous truth-tellers for their tenacious advocacy on behalf of the Port Chicago sailors. But we want to open with a video, and I want to thank the Office of Communications and Media for putting together this video. So we'll begin with that, and then I'll introduce our special guest today.
Every sailor serving at the Port Chicago Naval Magazine had chosen, chosen, to serve, and the U.S. Navy had an obligation to keep them safe. Every sailor loading ammunition on Steamship VA Brian who gave their last measure of devotion chose to raise their right hand and swear no to defend the Constitution of the United States, as did every one of the 258 sailors who were then tried and convicted as criminals for refusing to work in those unsafe conditions. That horrific explosion was etched in the hearts of a nation already grappling with the horrors of war. Most of these fallen heroes were African-American men. On Wednesday, I announced my decision and signed the orders to set aside the court martial results of all 258 sailors convicted nearly 80 years ago.
And it's really a tribute to them, who none of them are with us anymore, that this is their legacy of this country. A great country should be able to accept that it made mistake, and it's finally done that.
My whole life, my dad has been talking about this, and so to see it finally happen is just really amazing.
His dad would be so pleased with how these sailors are being honored.
I'm overwhelmed, and I'm deeply saddened that he couldn't be here to see this.
A shame that it took this long. But one thing I wish is that I had the opportunity to sit in the face of all those gentlemen and their families who's waited so long for this day to come. So as a part of government and a local elected official, I really wish I had the opportunity to apologize.
So we want to thank the Office of Communications and Media for that video. For your word, Supervisor Glover. We also want to thank Yuli Padmore with the Port Chicago Alliance for providing the historic footage that we just saw in the video. And so now I want to introduce our guests, and you all can make your way to the front as I share these introductions, and they're all going to offer brief remarks just about the significance of this moment. I want to invite Phil Arnold, Air Force veteran, racial equity and healing, community advocate. I call him the conscience of the county. He reminds us to never forget. I want to invite Chanel Scales-Preston, representative for Congressman Mark DeSohnier. In 2022, Congressman DeSohnier successfully passed a measure that would direct the Secretary of the United States Navy to publicly exonerate the Port Chicago 50. We want to invite Yuli Padmore from the Port Chicago Alliance, a nonprofit dedicated to restoring, preserving, and elevating the history of the Port Chicago Naval Magazine and the sailors who resided, served, and championed equal rights there. Reverend Diana McDaniel is joining us virtually. She is the Senior Minister of the Unity Church of San Leandro and leads the Friends of the Port Chicago National Memorial of 501(c)(3), that's a partner with the National Park Service. We have with us today Superintendent Kaylin Berry of the National Park Service, which is home to the Port Chicago Naval Magazine National Memorial. John Mercurio, the Board Director of the East Bay Regional Park District, which received part of the Concord Naval Weapons Station through a public benefit conveyance in 2019 and has named the park, the Thurgood Marshall Regional Park, home of the Port Chicago 50. And finally, we have Jonathan Lee here with us today, who's the Chair of the Contra Costa County Bar Association, Port Chicago Task Force. They are comprised of attorneys as well as non-attorney members of the community, formed to raise awareness of the injustice in the legal and broader community and advocate for setting aside of the mutiny convictions of the Port Chicago 50. So we're so very grateful to have each of them here, and we'll begin with remarks from Phil.
Now faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen, for by it the elders obtain a good report, Hebrews 11:1. This scripture underwrites the long-suffering, patience, perseverance, purpose, and unrequited faith by so many over the past 80 years to right a glaring egregious wrong. We're gathered here today to publicly participate in a holistic wellness healing based on the historic justice action taken by the U.S. Department of the Navy's exoneration of the Port Chicago 50. My God that I serve has known about this meeting and your presence here since the beginning of time. This overdue exoneration is the start of the cleansing of this wound before we can close the wound. We know the scars will remain forever. We are forever and mindful grateful for those who served at Port Chicago who wrote a blank check to protect our ideology of democracy in spite of what we were back then as a legally apartheid country and society. One of the greatest original Tuskegee Airmen, General Chappy James Jr., who flew 101 combat missions in Korea and 78 more in Vietnam, said it best. "I've fought in three wars, and three more wouldn't be too much to defend my country. I have America, as she has weaknesses or ills. I will hold her hand." I am ever so grateful to have the honor to participate in the tireless planting contributed by so many of seeds over the year calling for this exoneration. Because of this continuous written, spoken, and prayerful uplift, many can now sit in the shade of those trees that were originally planted some 80 years ago. I am grateful to see this day as my lifetime thanks to God's grace and mercy. Frederick Douglass once told an audience that change would only come if people were willing to agitate, agitate, agitate. I say this as the son of First Lieutenant Philip H. Arnold Sr. and the son-in-law of a Tuskegee Airmen Edwin Thomas Cowan. Thank you for this day. You may now refer to me as Agitate Arnold. Oh, by the way, I have a copy of the program that we received on July 17, 2 p.m. at Port Chicago. Thanks to Congressman Miller inviting me for the letter-writing campaign that I was helping with at the time. And it's dated July 17, 1994. So this has been a 30-year journey for me. Thank you very much.
My name is Chanel Scales-Preston, and I am the District Director for Congressman Mark DeSohnier. And I just want to thank the Board for honoring this day. It's a special moment. Myself as being a staff person for the last 23 years and having the honor to work for George Miller and Mark DeSohnier, you know, I say all the time, you have elected officials that are pulled in so many different directions, but I'm so blessed to be able to work for someone, for two people that wanted to fight for injustice that was happening in their district. And I think that's been the ultimate honor for me as being a staff person and to actually see it come to fruition. So I just want to thank all of the different organizations that have, you know, I connected with, and we all have been able to work together on this. You know, I think as staffers, you know, we don't get a chance to honor each other, so I just want to thank all the staff that has worked on this as well. I was talking to my aunt over the weekend and telling her about this event, and she's 90 years old. She lives in Pittsburgh, and she used to say, "Oh, I used to enjoy when the sailors from Port Chicago would come over to Pittsburgh and hang out." Well, you know, we talk about all the time that, you know, Pittsburgh was a place where the Port Chicago African-American sailors were able to recreate, and they weren't able to do that in the city of Concord. And so it's nice to hear stories and the story come to life, and what I think is important is that we continue to share the story with someone so that no one never forgets. I would like to share a letter on behalf of the Congressman. He is here for District Board period, but we have packed up his schedule, so I'm sorry he's unable to be here today. Dear friends, while I'm unable to join you today, it's with great pride that our office is here for the special presentation to recognize and celebrate the exoneration of the Port Chicago sailors. I am grateful for what it means to so many families and for our community. It was a long time past that this historical injustice was made right, and the Navy officially cleared the record. Thurgood Marshall, who ultimately became involved in the trial for Port Chicago 50, once said, "What's at stake here is more than the rights of my clients. It's the moral commitment stated in our nation's creed." It was the same motivation that inspired us to continue to lead the fight after encountering so many roadblocks. We authored four resolutions and several amendments to push this historical moment. Some passed in the House but were blocked before being signed into law. In so much of this work, I am grateful to have been joined by my colleagues and friend, Rep. Barbara Lee and member of the Congressional Black Caucus, and Congressman John Garamendi. This was at the top of my work when I came into Congress, and I was proud to be supported by George Miller, who has fought this good fight for a long time. Justice has finally been served, and our nation has corrected unjustifiable injustice once and for all. Once again, I wish to thank the families, the community, all the organizations, and my colleagues to celebrate this special moment. Sincerely, Congressman Mark DeSohnier. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Yuli Padmore, Executive Director of Port Chicago Alliance. Good morning, Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors. I'm honored to be here this morning in my capacity as Executive Director of Port Chicago I see a few of my heroes here in the room today, and it reminds me that with their dedication to preserving these stories, to preserving the stories of the Port Chicago sailors, this history could have easily been lost on a dusty bookshelf. I see, I would say, through their years of dedicated efforts, the people here today, whether virtually, in person, or in spirit, have kept this history alive. It began with Dr. Robert Allen, whom we sadly lost last month. Dr. Allen's work continues every time we speak of the sailors, breathing life into their history by talking about their sacrifices, accomplishments, and personal stories. With everything the sailors have done for us, for our nation, that is what we can do for them. Continue to speak of them with honor and reverence for what they did and continue to do for us. I remember hearing about this history for the first time many years ago and how proud it made me that these brave Black American men served their country during World War II under hazardous conditions despite facing discrimination and unnecessarily harsh treatment. That pride I felt was for those who courageously sacrificed their lives for our country and those who bravely stood up for their civil rights in the face of death. Hearing this history for the first time also made me upset. Frankly, it made me angry, particularly because the surviving sailors and their nonviolent act of protest against Jim Crow segregation was still being referred to as a mutiny, as a crime. Of course, the Port Chicago 50 are not the first civil rights heroes to be vilified for standing up against systems of racial oppression. But it saddened me that in their lifetimes, the surviving Port Chicago sailors held their stories close, not speaking of their experiences because they had been branded as unpatriotic, as un-American. Many of the sailors refused to do public interviews, concerned they would lose their jobs, pensions, or Social Security benefits. But now, with the work that has been done to successfully clear their names, their children and grandchildren don't have to be upset or angry. With justice served, the descendants will never stop telling their stories because they are proud of their ancestors' bravery, resilience, and achievements as patriots of our nation. And it is through their voices, through our voices, that we honor the legacy of the Port Chicago sailors. By sharing their stories of bravery and sacrifice and continuing to ensure justice is fully realized for their families, we ensure that this history will never be forgotten and that their courage continues to inspire future generations. Thank you.
We'd like to invite Reverend Diana McDaniel at this time.
Good morning. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So good morning, Mr. Chair and the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for having us, and I really want to commend you for having an Office of Racial Equity and Social Justice. And for having this celebration today, this acknowledgement, this honoring of the exoneration of those brave sailors. I want to thank the community organizers that we've worked together with because it has taken many of us, many hands, many voices, to get this done. Mark DeSohnier is my hero. George Miller is my hero. I am just so grateful to them for the work that they've done, and they've stuck with this to get it completed. Barbara Lee and Garamendi, thank you for your help. This has been going on, this whole appeal for exoneration began with the NAACP in 1944, so many years. And we have, as the Friends of Port Chicago National Memorial, we have testified before Congress, we've written letters, we've made phone calls, we've done all those things that advocates do, and we have been successful in it becoming a full unit of the National Park Service to have the 392nd National Park to continue to preserve this history. So we have been working for many years. I'm grateful to all the other organizations who've worked with us, and I just want to simply say thank you. A wrong, a major wrong, has been righted. So we thank the Biden Administration, the Secretary of the Navy. It could not have been done without the General Counsel for the Navy, Sean Coffey. So we are very grateful, and I think that's all I have to say. I'm a happy camper.
My name is Kaylin Berry, and I am the Superintendent of Port Chicago Naval Magazine National Memorial. The memorial was established to commemorate the role of that military facility during World War II, to recognize those who served there, and to honor the memory of those who gave their lives and were injured in the explosion of July 17, 1944. It is, as Reverend Diana said, a unit of the National Park Service, and I'm very proud to serve as its superintendent. Since the park was created in 2009, we've told the story of the explosion, its aftermath, the ways in which it was a catalyst for change in our country. We've shared the stories of the victims and the survivors, the call for safer working conditions, the work stoppage, and the mutiny trial. And now, we look forward to sharing the latest chapter of this important story, the exoneration of the sailors, who've now had their names cleared. The story of these Black sailors is a testament to the resilience and determination of those who stood against injustice and discrimination. We will proudly continue to honor and remember them as fearless men who played a crucial role in the fight for equality. The National Park Service protects not only some of the most iconic landscapes in America, but also our history. At parks all across the country, including the four parks that we manage here in Contra Costa County, we educate visitors about some of the most significant events in U.S. history. And not all of those stories are easy, but all of them are important for us to understand. The exoneration acknowledges that the institutionalized racism experienced by the Black sailors was a product of broader systemic issues. And it sends a message of hope for a just society that acknowledges past wrongs, speaks up against injustices, and promotes racial equity and justice for all. We at the National Park Service invite you to share in this story with us and become ambassadors of it to others that you know. Thank you.
I'm John Mercurio. I'm an East Bay Regional Park District Board Member representing Ward 6. Happy to be here today and have this opportunity. I just want to say, at the East Bay Regional Park District, we're committed to ensuring that the history, bravery, and legacies of the Port Chicago 50 are never forgotten. We equally honor those who survived the explosion, whose historic contribution to social justice, civil, and workers' rights has now been acknowledged and honored by the Navy. The recent historic decision by the Secretary of the Navy shows leadership unmatched for the preceding 80 years. The Park District has long supported the call for the Navy to exonerate these brave men. And as we turn to the future, we believe this creates more momentum for us to realize our vision for a world-class visitor center and regional park where this history will forever be preserved and shared. When the East Bay Regional Park District, with support from the community, renamed the park Thurgood Marshall Regional Park, home of the Port Chicago 50, it was to guarantee that there would always be a place where everyone can gather, not only to learn this history, but to have meaningful conversations, to learn the lessons from the past, which will help create a better future. The park is poised to become the accessible location for this community of decedents, community groups, government agencies, and individuals to come together and commemorate the tragic loss of lives while also honoring the bravery and courage of the sailors who stood together after the disaster. It is our hope, the Park District and visitor center, which we are advancing with support from Representative DeSohnier, who championed $3 million in initial funding and in partnership with the National Park Service, will ensure the preservation of the history of your families and that the legacy of the Port Chicago 50 will be taught in memoriam forever. We would like to welcome you all to join us in We would like to welcome you all to join us in creating Thurgood Marshall Regional Park, home of the Port Chicago 50, and to thank those here today who have already engaged with us on this journey. At the East Bay Regional Park District, we believe in the power of parks to foster meaningful connections and conversations by providing equitable access and preserving cultural and environmental history. The Park District aims to create inclusive spaces which serve our community for generations to come. And again, I thank you for the time today to speak, and I also want to recognize my fellow board member, Colin Coffey, who's here with us today, who represents the territory upon which this memorial lies. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Jonathan Lee.
Good morning. Thank you for having this celebration. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Jonathan Lee. I am the Chair of the Port Chicago Task Force of the Contra Costa County Bar Association. I have served in that capacity for almost three years. I've been a Director of the Board of the Organization during that time as well. You probably know that the Contra Costa County Bar Association has approximately 1,300 members, and it's dedicated to the excellence of the practice of law in the county and in the region. And the idea for the task force, the animated principle behind it, is that lawyers who live and work in this community should know about this incident in our history and should care about it, and should promote both the awareness of it and should advocate for exoneration. Much has been said here by the previous speakers about the significance, the historical significance of the events. I will just echo everything that's been said and just add my little statement on top, and that is that we can never take for granted or underestimate the role that these men played as catalysts for the modern civil rights movement, because without their stand, the Navy probably doesn't desegregate when it does. The Armed Forces don't desegregate, which set the stage for the 1950s. What have we done? Well, there's been a robust exoneration movement for 80 years, and our involvement is recent. We became involved in 2021. We did trial reenactments. There were two of those, one of which we did with the partner, the Federal Bar Association, and it was simultaneously broadcast nationwide to an audience of federal judges and lawyers who practice in federal court, over 300 of them. We engaged in direct advocacy with state and local government as well, but also our federal government, the executive branch, and members of Congress. I had an in-person meeting with Representative Garamendi that both he and I have described as memorable. It has been a pleasure to do that advocacy, and we've been building on arguments and work of others, of course. We dug into the papers of Thurgood Marshall and found his briefs to the Secretary of the Navy from 1945. All of the arguments were so strongly stated in those papers. We then took and did a detailed study of the trial transcript itself, its 1,500 pages, and there are just a number of arguments that came to us that are violations of due process, from the structural racism of the day, and it plays out in multiple different ways. We're going to hopefully prepare some papers that will help to explain that in detail for those who want to take a deeper dive. But it was really, the idea was that if we use our legal training and experience to try to add our voice to this huge movement for exoneration, that hopefully something could happen that would be positive. We're all thrilled with the recent development, of course. I do want to say that the task force thinks that there's more work that needs to be done. I've been in touch with some family members, and I can tell you that there is generational pain out there that needs addressing. And we hope to serve as a sort of a resource, a clearinghouse, where people need representation. We hope to refer them to law firms who are equipped to carry up and represent them pro bono. And we also want to do some education. Obviously, there are a lot of people, and you've heard from some of them today, who are active in this movement, and we just want to join our voices with theirs and try to help keep this history uppermost in everyone's mind in our community and nationally. Thank you very much.
Kendra, this is Reverend Diana. Give me for interrupting. I just wanted to mention, on the video, there was a picture that said Rev. Diana McDaniel. And I wanted to say, that really was, it wasn't me. It was Daphne Muse, who was a very dear friend of Robert Allen's, who wrote the book, Port Chicago Mutiny. I just wanted to share that's who that was.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, and so we thank everyone who spoke today, and we turn it to you if you have closing thoughts.
Thank you, Kendra, and the Office. It's greatly appreciated that you've put this together and brought in some key speakers for today's event. I want to personally thank yourself and the Bar Association for the work that's being done in really trying to identify the wrong so that people know from a legal perspective that what took place and are able to share that. So thank you once again for your participation in this process and all the other advocates that's out there today. You know, we know that this work takes place at a high level, but it's because of the fire and energy that's done on a local level that brings it to the point where we can get to where we are today with this total exoneration. And I want to thank my fellow board members, and I know they all have comments, but we have continued to support the efforts of our congressional delegation. And so we were just very thankful for the community at large in bringing this home. And I'm going to turn to, we'll go by districts, so District One, John, Supervisor Joya.
Federal, thanks for having this item on the agenda. And just to note, I still remember when Congressman Miller started this journey in 1994, 30 years ago. And I think, Federal, thank you for saying, you know, that really it is a shame how long this took. And as Dr. King said in one of his famous writings, "Justice too long delayed is justice denied." And so, but I think it's just as important to think about the fact that the harms that occurred decades ago still have reverberations and impacts today. And so we can all sort of pat ourselves on the back and say, well, this is great, the exoneration occurred, and that is great, that we're still addressing the impact of those harms, which is exactly why Supervisor Glover and I took the proposal here to establish this Office of Racial Equity and Social Justice. What do we do today, and what do we do, you know, to address current harms and then impacts that happened from previous harms? I still remember a conversation I had back in 2012, the opening of the Rosie the Riveter Visitor Center, of course, Kaylin Berry's predecessor, you know, you're the Superintendent of Rosie the Riveter in Richmond, as well as the Port Chicago National Park. And I remember having a conversation with Betty Reed Soskin. You know, those of you know Betty, she's 102 years old, she was the oldest National Park Ranger, she's in the history of the National Park. She worked as an African-American woman in shipyard-related industries in Richmond during the war and experienced some of those harms. And I remember, I was speaking at the opening of the visitor center and talking to her, and I said, "So how do you feel about this park, this having this park that tells the story of World War II?" And she said, "I'm not sure yet how I feel." She said, "You know, we're here celebrating this visitor center, but the park needs to tell all the stories that happened here, the good, the bad, and the ugly, because these individual stories from the park tell the stories of who we were as a country, what was happening at the time, who we were as a county." And so it was great that, well, Betty said at the time, "We need to tell all those stories." And of course, she got hired by the National Park Service, got all this national attention, lit the Christmas tree for President, when Obama was president one year at the White House, and she held talks telling all those stories of what happened during World War II. And I appreciate that the National Park has incorporated that in Port Chicago, that it's about telling those stories, that we can't address the impact of harms today if we're not acknowledging, and several people talked about this, if we're not acknowledging the racism, the injustice, the harms that occurred before. So I think that's the significance of this. As Federal said, you know, you want to be facing those individuals, and you can't, they're not alive, but we can act toward addressing the impacts of all the harms, not just this harm, but the many other harms that have happened over the decades. So I think that's the significance of this, is that recognition. But we need to flip the coin over and say, it's not just about this and acknowledging this exoneration, but it's about working to do the hard work to address the impacts that still exist today from previous harms. So I just wanted to, Kendra, thanks for leading this discussion, and thanks to all the speakers that are here as well. And Phil, always your great words. And I know also, Chanel, is the mayor, former mayor of Pittsburgh, and on the city council, you've dealt with these issues there, as well as being a staff person, so just to acknowledge that as well.
Thank you. Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes, Kendra, thank you so much for organizing this today. I think it is so important, and as we recently had this honoring, this celebration on site, it's so nice to be able to bring this to our chambers and to be able to share it with so many more individuals. To me, this is something, there are so many parts of the history of the United States that were sort of brushed aside, because when I was growing up in Hawaii, everything was sort of, we had sort of the rosy picture of things. And I remember going off to college and taking a class about the underside of American history, where we started delving upon the horrible things that took place. And in World War II, there were so many different areas in which we had these inequities, these horrific things. Growing up in Hawaii, of course, I saw very firsthand the impact on the Japanese community with the internments and the impact and the way which they were treated. But I knew very little about what had happened here in Pittsburgh, growing up, and it wasn't until I moved to Contra Costa that I had this awareness. And I'm so appreciative that we have so many partners, you know, the Bar Association, my husband was president of the Bar Association back in 2017, and this wasn't something they were working on. At that time, they were really working on diversity issues within law firms and really promoting that. And it's wonderful to see that just seven years later, this initiative has really come to fruition of going beyond just talking about something, but actually using the legal skills that we have as attorneys to promote exoneration and ensure that we're helping those families. And I love seeing the embracing by East Bay Regional Park District, by the National Park, just having so many organizations saying, a wrong was committed, we need to honor those, and we need to not just say nice things about them, but do something about it. And so, again, I'm just honored that we were able to have this today in our chambers and spread the word even further about what happened then and how, moving forward, there are still things that can be addressed. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Anderson. Next, Diana Burgess, who's a District Three Supervisor, and I want to thank you and Supervisor Carlson, because I know you also were on the front line of the celebration and the park opening and what have you, so Supervisor Burgess.
So 80 years ago, July 17, 10:18 in the evening. And I think about the weather, and I think about what it felt like to be there on the docks. And I think about this explosion. And if you haven't read about what the explosion was, I encourage you to do so, because it was a huge explosion. It was felt far away. And I think about these Black brave soldiers that had already had to maneuver with racism and all of the things that you had to deal with at that time, and dealing with the trauma of seeing other soldiers and seeing the devastation and not knowing if you were still safe. I mean, I just want to like really connect with what that felt like. And then, to have the courage to say, this is not okay, when already dealing with everything else. I mean, I just, I really want to like connect with that. And 80 years, you know, we hear about explosions and what happens, that explosion still is occurring within families, because that trauma is still there. Those families are still dealing with that. And the pride and the passion and the perseverance that these families have carried that story, and the people that we've kind of lifted up and talked about today, they've collected that information, they've carried that story. And it was so touching and meaningful to be there a few weeks ago at Port Chicago to see that and to see those families and to see these people that really weren't specifically connected personally, but had taken that story and brought it together. And I want to talk about Yuli Padmore. Sorry, Yuli. She's not one that likes to draw a lot of attention to herself, but I want to say, she collected bits and pieces of those stories, collected that data. And somebody specifically told me that he took that information and those words and brought it to the Secretary of the Navy. And that's what all of you have been doing, is collecting this information. And we're not done. We're not done. What this is, is this is saying, this was not okay. But it's also a place where we get to teach little kids, Black, Brown, White, and adults, that it wasn't okay, and that there were people that kept saying it wasn't okay for 80 years and finally were heard. And this is a story about how people come together and don't give up, and we have pride in our community, and that's why this has happened. And so, East Bay Regional Park District, I was on the board when we were working on this. I'm so proud that we are going to be a part of that education so that kids can learn those stories and that we can have that pride and understand that that is part of who we are as a community. Friends of Port Chicago, holy cow, you have kept it together. I am so touched by those stories. The Bar Association, I was at their celebration last year, and that's all I kept hearing about, was what could we do to make this happen? The commitment by all these folks that knew this was not okay, and how do we do it? And I'll say that there was somebody that I spoke to at the event, and he said to me, "This is one of the proudest moments in my career." And when I joined, and I'm not going to give a lot of information, but he said, "I was misogynistic. I was racist. I was homophobic. And now, this is one of the biggest amazing things that I've actually been able to accomplish." So what you all have done is helped people move along and evolve as humans. So I'm not going to talk anymore, because you can tell I'm passionate about this, but I want to also say, Kendra, you rock. I asked about doing this two weeks ago, and you made it happen, so good job. Thank you.
Supervisor Ken Carlson, District Four.
Thank you. I'll do my best not to repeat what everybody else has said, other than to just express my gratitude. To be out there on the 20th and to see all those who have worked so diligently and so hard, I think Diane said it best, patience, persistence, perseverance, and pride, you know, bring it all together. But to see the emotional impact on the leaders, and as leaders, we get work done, but the real work is done by those that are driving us, those that are the agitators or the advocates and making things happen. It's just so emotional to see, and we saw it in the video, Secretary of the Navy. Secretary of the Navy, big bull of a guy, no pun intended, but, you know, here he is, just rocked with emotion to have a part of history that he probably didn't want to have in the sense of, why would you ever want to face having to exonerate people that are standing up for what is right? So it just, in the whole envelope of things, it's just, there's so much emotion caught up in it. I'm just really proud that this is our community, that we have gotten here. You know, I'm grateful for our National Park Service and East Bay Regional Parks, because the collaboration they'll continue to carry on with the organizations that are supporting, remembering this piece of our history are really, really important. Generations to come will need to understand this and know this. We played a huge role in World War II, whether that was, you know, the shipyards in Richmond to Port Chicago to Camp Stoneman that shipped people out to the Pacific Theater. There is a lot of history to be shared here. There's a lot of healing that continues to need to be done. And I think Congressman DeSauconier is summing it up in the sense of, you know, being a great nation, we should be able to recognize our mistakes and fight to correct them and right the wrongs that we have done throughout our system. So again, I am thankful to the community that put this together, that continued to persevere over decades to right this wrong. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. And in ending, I just want to, once again, Chanel, if you could stand, and I appreciate Chanel Scales Preston, who has been the District Representative for two of the leader and the finisher of making sure that the leadership has been in place and that we've kept it alive. So really want to thank you and the congressmen staff. So make sure that you connect with George and Mark, and we had an opportunity, myself and John, to serve with Mark, so we know that his passion was all about this also. And starting and finishing is quite a legacy. So thank you all. Thank you all for your support and the great work that has taken place over 80 years. Yes, and I don't know whether we should take it looking out that way, but come on in. We're going to take a picture of everyone who's here for this item.